Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting Policy Work Session. Good evening to all that in the audience. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Dr. Gilbert and Ms. Baker. And welcome, Ms. Price. Welcome. Well, our order of business is Policy Board Review. Ms. Baker.
Okay. The first policy you have before you tonight was approved at the last board meeting for on first reading. It's Board Policy BO-49, Appointment of Board Members to Committees. This policy authorizes the board chair to make appointments of board members to various committees that are established by the Murfreesboro City School District. That would include committees established by the director and by the board with the input of the director, but the final decision is that of the board chair. And then following such appointment, the chair shall promptly report the appointment to the board at the next scheduled board meeting.
Are there any questions or comments concerning BO-49? Dr. Brown?
Quick question. If we're reporting at the next scheduled board meeting, to me promptly seems to be redundant.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we just take that single word out.
If there are no other questions or comments, will entertain a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next policy that you have before you that has been approved on first reading is Board Policy BO-50 regarding the Executive Committee. This policy sets forth the duties and responsibilities of the Executive Committee as they are designated in state statute. And the Executive Committee is composed of the board chair and the director, the chair being the, the board chair being the chair of the Executive Committee. Also, there was added at the end during our last policy session and board meeting language to say that the Executive Committee may delegate to other school personnel the exercise of any of the powers and the discharge of any duties imputed upon the Executive Committee by this policy or by a vote of the board. Because earlier y'all had questions about does the board chair and director actually physically do these, these items which that, that authority's actually delegated.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker concerning BO-50? Mrs. Phillips?
I have just a comment really. I'm wondering if any of these duties are delegated, which of course some of them have to be, if that could be reported back to the board, just so it keeps the board in the loop.
Well, one thing that I did, if you'll notice on the next page, and I'm actually going to ask that that be moved up to the first page, just pushed over to the right side of the bottom of the page, the cross references. Those cross references you see, those list the board policies where some of those duties have been delegated out to staff. So that, those policies such as the purchasing and the budget, how those have been delegated out to staff. So there are some board policies that have already taken care of that, that delegation.
Then I guess it would be just anything out of the ordinary perhaps.
Are there any other questions? Okay. If not, we'll ask for a motion.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy PER-10, Payroll Deductions. Again, this policy has been approved on first reading at the last board meeting. The only addition to this policy, it was an already existing board policy, I have added lines 70 through 81, which just are making it clear that under state law, anytime an employee has wage assignments for either child support or alimony or for any other federal or state law requirements, that that employee can't be disciplined for, because they're having their wages garnished for some reason. And that's pursuant to state and federal law.
Are there any questions?
I do.
Mr. Campbell?
Under other programs, says 15% of eligible employees. Now, who does that include? Does that include all of our employees? Or does that only include our professional teacher staff?
I think that would mean if it's an organization, for example, it's the MEA, and let's say only teachers are authorized to be in that organization, then 15% of the employees that are eligible to be in that organization have to request this deduction. Is that correct, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, that would be correct on it, on any of those type programs where they've established a dues or something like that would be.
So you don't necessarily have to be a member of MEA to be considered. You're still part of that 15% if you're not a member? If you're a professional employee?
If they are, if they're an eligible employee to be in that association or that organization, then yes, that would be correct, is my understanding, unless Kelly says some state law supersedes that.
Now, it, the, the way this reads is that it's 15% of eligible employees, so you don't necessarily have to have joined that organization.
What are maintenance standards? Line 58?
The maintenance standards is to make sure that they're, they are reaching the 10% level of eligible employees past the first year to maintain it. And that's, that's what that would be to make, you know, if you read the second line, line 54 of other programs, or line 50, or any of those that have where we have to maintain 10% of the program, those are the maintenance standards.
Okay. Ms. Phillips, do you have a question or comment?
I just have a, just a small question here. I'm just curious, Ms. Baker. Who in the central office would know? How, how, how private are the information about garnishment or things like that of employees' wages?
Um, it's my understanding that's kept very private. That would basically be out of the payroll office.
Right. The garnishments are delivered personally to the payroll department, and there's only two people who work in the payroll, and those would be the only two people that would see the garnishment. I don't even see the garnishments.
Thank you. It's good to know that their privacy is protected.
If there are no other questions about this PER-10, we'll ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Mr. Phillips has made the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy STU-63 regarding head injuries. This policy has been approved on first reading. This again is a policy, it's a new policy that is mandated by state law, and it is mandated under the state law that was passed, this passed legislative session regarding youth injuries in athletic events. It's TCA-68-55-502, which is what is applicable to school organizations. This law requires that our, that all school systems that have athletic, athletic competitions, is defined as school youth athletic activities, adopt a policy regarding concussion, concussions. And the policy must follow the guidelines that have been set out by the Tennessee Department of Health and utilize the forms that have been developed by the Tennessee Department of Health. They define a school youth athletic activity as any organized athletic activity where the majority of the participants are under 18 years of age and are engaging in an organized athletic game or competition against another team, club, or entity, or in practice or preparation for an organized game or competition against another team, club, or entity. It does not include athletic activity that is just a side event to say some sort of learning process that you're going on in PE or something of that nature. It strictly has to be teams that are in competition with other teams. And under the, the law, we have to first inform and educate our coaches, school administrators, youth athletes, and their parents or guardians of the nature, risk, and symptoms of concussions and head injuries. We have to require annual training of coaches, and that's whether the coach is an employee or a volunteer, and annual training of the school athletic directors. And that training has actually already been developed by the CDC, and I believe there's another organization that has developed that training. And those videos of, there are online videos of the training. If you go to the Tennessee Department of Health's website, you can click on that, watch the training. I actually went through the training, so I would be able to explain it to you. It will ask you, show you scenarios, ask you questions, and you have to answer the questions correctly in order to move forward in the training. And then at the end of the training, it will print out a certificate that the coach can bring back to the school to show that they've completed the training. So, and it was very simple. I think it took me around 20 minutes to go through it, and so it wasn't a long, drawn out training. It was helpful in that it had the ability to pause it and click on a section that was entitled "Resources" that allowed you to go to, in, to read more in-depth material about concussion injury, what you should be looking for if you're a coach or an official, and to also print out forms that you can keep on your clipboard and that you can give to parents and that you can utilize. So that was all part of the training. So it was, it's a very helpful and easy process. Also, the state law requires that on a yearly basis, a concussion and head injury information sheet has to be signed and returned by each coach and athletic director to the director of schools. It also requires that on a yearly basis, a concussion and head injury information sheet be reviewed by all youth athletes and their parents, signed and returned to the school prior to the youth athlete initiating practice or competition. And there again, those forms have been developed by the Tennessee Department of Health. We have those forms that you would give the parents and have them sign. There, there's also information on those forms that set out, give parents some education about what are signs and symptoms of a concussion that they should be looking for when they go home with their, their child. And there's a piece that they can keep, and then there's the piece they sign and initial and turn in. So that, it's, it's a very helpful form that the Tennessee Department of Health has already created. And then the law mandates that we maintain all of that documentation for at least three years. And the law also mandates that we establish a policy requiring the immediate removal of any youth athlete who shows signs, symptoms, and behaviors consistent with a concussion from the activity or competition. And that's where the training that the coaches and officials undergo comes into play. And that is where they would utilize the concussion signs and symptoms checklist. It's a form that they encourage them to keep on their clipboards at games, and that they would go through this to see if enough of those signs and symptoms are present that the child should be pulled from the activity. And then the law mandates that the youth athlete is not to be allowed to return to play until they've been cleared by a physician. And they actually have also developed a form that the athlete is to take to their physician, and the physician signs it, fills it out, and notes whether the athlete's cleared to return to full play or, or able to come back to graduated play. And they also explain what graduated play is, and the physician can note how, how they want to see that progress. And that has to be returned to the school before the child can return to the activity. So that's a summary of this policy that's required under the state law.
Mrs. Rainier?
When you discussed at the very beginning about, you know, this would not apply to a field trip when the children are playing, it also does not apply for recess. This is strictly our little basketball or cheerleading activities, right?
Exactly. It doesn't apply to the PE class. It doesn't apply to recess. It's, it's strictly for those competitions where you have organized teams playing each other.
Right. That's, that's what I thought, but I just thought we should clarify for sure. And also, when you talk about this form that the, that the physician has to sign, I would think, and Dr. Brown might be able to shed some light, would they, would the physicians perhaps keep that, those forms in their office?
Typically, you would expect them to.
Yes.
But if they don't have them, they're easily obtained from the internet, so.
Yeah. They're all on the internet, so they could go to the Department of Health website, type in concussion, and it goes straight to it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. In case somebody leaves a game and somehow misplaces this piece of paper, more than likely their physician would be able to replicate it or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rainier. Mr. Campbell?
We discussed last time when we looked at this policy regarding volunteer coaches. I'd like to get a little bit of background on our volunteer coaches. How are they selected? Is there any background check on them? Or is it just dads coming in off the streets that say, you know, Andy comes in and says, "I want to help you out a little bit. My son's playing."
I will defer to Mr. Ringstaff on that question.
We have three different types of coaches in Murfreesboro City Schools. We have the coach who is an employee of Murfreesboro City Schools, who's a full-time employee, an educational assistant, or a teacher, PE teacher a lot of times. And we have a non-faculty coach, someone who is not a part of our faculty, not a part of our school system, is a full-time employee, but is still getting paid to coach the basketball. Then we also have a volunteer coach. That's someone who volunteers their time and doesn't expect any pay. On all, every coach gets fingerprinted, background checked, and it has to go through the principal, the principal must approve the coach being on the premises and working with the children before they are allowed to do that. We have actually an application, application for employment for a basketball coach online, and it asks all the pertinent questions that typically, we don't go through all the employment background. We ask for the present employer and the first past employer, but we don't have, ask all the other questions that we would a teacher and things like that. But we also have a volunteer application, and this is part of Board Policy IS-10, that there's a three-tier volunteer process. If, if a volunteer comes to read to a class, then, and it's always in the presence of a teacher, they do not have to get a background check. But if they are chaperoning on a field trip or working with a student one-on-one, then they must get a background check.
Okay. Now, let me go another step, being with a background of administration and athletics scenario here, okay? I'm the coach. Andy Brown's son is playing for me. And Andy comes in and says, "Butch, I'd be glad to help you out a little bit." Okay? And I say, "Yeah, that's okay." Now, he, he has not filled out any kind of application or anything along that line, but as a parent, I'm letting him do so, which is probably violation on my part. But even if he has filled out the application, and let's say that for some unknown reason, he gets bitterly upset with one of these basketball players. I'm working on one end of the floor and he's on the other, and he does something, and the child goes home and tells mom and dad that this man grabbed me by the shoulders. And now mom and dad are upset over that, so where does the liability lie, Ralph? Is it on, because, because we know those others that have been involved, anybody else, the lawsuits are going to start with the volunteer, then the coach, then the school administration, then the director of schools, and the board, and everybody else. So where are we in regards to a liability situation with the volunteer coach?
I think Ms. Baker can better answer that question, but in my opinion, in that situation, that scenario is no different than a volunteer reading to a class, and a child gets up and misbehaves or something, that volunteer just grabs her shoulder and asks him to sit down politely. So I think that situation is identical regardless if it's a basketball gym or a classroom. Ms. Baker?
So where is the liability?
I think that is why we've developed policies and procedures to protect ourselves liability, from, from that type of liability. And if we have individuals that have failed to comply with our policies and procedures without any authority issued from us, giving us permission to ignore the policy, you can go in and let them help coach, then that would protect us as a school system. Now, an individual that chooses not to follow the policies and procedures and require people to, you know, go through the proper protocol to interact individually, one-on-one with the children, that, that would open them up to possibly some exposure, but it would be very difficult to give you an ironclad answer because it'll really be very fact-specific. But that's the whole purpose for us as a school system, developing these protocols to ensure that we're educating our staff, our employees, and our volunteers as to what our policies are in the proper way to work with the children, handle the children, and to apply to, to have that, that, that ability to participate in those activities.
We may have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We were one of the first people, we're first school systems to implement a volunteer background check for our volunteers in our application process for that. We were one of the first school systems in the state to do this.
All right. Now, I know on the secondary level, the volunteer goes through the same application process and so forth, and the background check, and then all of those volunteers then are approved by, well, Rutherford County, I'll say, then they are approved by the board. Now, our volunteer coaches, they fill out the application and everything, I guess, goes to school administration and then comes to you, and then you, in essence, approve. You're the final stamp of approval?
Well, no, sir. The su, the principal would recommend the coach to human resources, and we would pull the application, and then we would submit it to the director of schools for her approval.
Okay. So then the director, it's, that's the last stop then?
Yes, sir. Employment.
It's basically the same kind of process that we would use with any other employee.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But coaches need to make sure that Daddy Brown wants to help out a little bit, we better make sure that Daddy Brown has been background checked and looked at, and we know all the specifics we need to know before we allow him to help. Am I, would I be saying that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mrs. Smith, and then Mrs. Phillips.
I understand where Mr. Campbell's coming from, but I'm also, it makes me a little leery about that if, if the daddies are at basketball practice and they aren't allowed to get out there and help with the, you know, play during, we always talk about that we want more parent involvement, and if we have to say, "Hey, hey, hey, you can't, you can't throw the ball with the boys, you can't help teach them how to do a layup," that makes me a little concerned. But the, the thing I wanted to clarify is that the paid coach is always around, correct? Or the one that has gotten approval all the way through? And then you have the parent volunteer who might be there, but they have to be with the person who's got the approval all the way through.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. We would, we would still like, in our volunteer application process, we would still like for that parent to go through the application. If, if I'm the coach and Dr. Brown comes in, he's a parent, and he come in 10 minutes early to pick up his child, if I asked him to rebound for somebody, then as long as he's gone through this application process, it's legal, as long as I'm, he hadn't gone through the background check, it's legal according to our board policy for him to do that, as long as he's gone through that application process. He doesn't have to have a background check for that.
So you're, what you're saying is maybe every parent ought to complete that, just in case it comes up? But it won't, but it wouldn't be very expensive because it would be just the basic volunteer?
It's not expensive at all. They have to complete one-page sheet right here.
Okay. But the, but the second tier of the coach, the outside party coach, that is not on the faculty, that has a complete, a thorough background check?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Then, thank you. Which one does this?
But now, all of our schools don't have volunteer coaches. Some of them don't want them.
They have, they have coaches on staff.
I just, I just want us to make sure that we're covered, just in case mom or dad that's helping out gets excited and something happens, because it can do. Y'all, all y'all know, you've been around it enough to know that.
Unfortunately.
It can.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Um, harking back to the background checks for the parent volunteers, just generally speaking, not particularly to coaches, how long does a background check take, Mr. Ringstaff?
About two days.
About two days?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, my concern, just to piggyback on Ms. Smith a little bit, because I, I understand, it's like, I, I'm thinking about the field trips. We talk about all the time how we want more parents involved, and, and then a parent finds out, "Oh, my gosh, they're going to so-and-so place," and I, I wind up having the day off. And I would love to be able to be, be on that trip and, and, and be a part of that. And that just wouldn't be able to happen under the rules we have now, is that correct?
No. It, it could happen if the parent is in a situation where they're not alone with the student. The only time that the background check is required for the volunteer is if the volunteer is strictly going to be alone and unsupervised with the student. So if they're in a situation where it's a group of students and teachers and parents taking the children on a field trip, that volunteer isn't alone with the students.
Okay. That, that's different.
Accompanying on a day field trip, you do not need a background check. An overnight field trip, you do.
Only, okay. That, that wasn't quite clear, but I, I now I'm glad to know that. I'm so glad to know that. Thank you. Because I want our parents to feel welcome and part of that education equation.
And I think it's my understanding that at the beginning of the school year, either through the initial class meeting or the packet that goes out when the students register, this form is included in such a way that parents can, at the beginning of the year, complete it and say, "Yes, I'm willing to volunteer to help in whatever way." And so that way, they won't be stuck at the last minute.
Sometimes though, with working parent situations arise where they get to, they have that day off and they get to go on that field trip, and, you know, that's very important to parents, be able to participate in that way. And of course, the safety of our children's always our utmost concern, but, you know, those, those things happen, so thank you.
Well, and right now, we're getting applications for the Land Between the Lakes field trips, overnight field trips.
Right.
Mr. Campbell, do you have another comment or question?
I don't think.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Are there any more? Oh, that's all right. Mr. Ringstaff, this is just a short, short question. At the beginning, are there meetings that the coaches, full-time employees have that makes them aware about the situation if it comes up with the dad or mom that just?
Before tryouts, before tryouts, I have a meeting with all the coaches. We detail the schedules and the rules and sportsmanship, conduct, and things like that.
So we know this doesn't happen a lot where the parents just, you know, get excited and run out there and want a coach. If there are no more questions, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of STU-58.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're approving 63, right? It's for the 58.
Um, thank you. I've been writing on the back of that paper. If you would, we'll go back. I'm sorry. We're not on STU-58, and thank you, Dr. Brown. Uh, we're on STU-63. We, I've gotten all excited. Flip my paper.
You're going to coach them?
No, 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 no. Can we get a motion for STU-63?
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again, Dr. Brown. I got excited.
Now, we're on STU 58, which deals with interscholastic athletics. This policy is just for you to review. It's the current policy. I've made no changes to this policy.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval, STU 58.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. This, the next board policy is a new policy, and it is before you tonight for your first initial review. It's Board Policy BO 51 regarding collaborative conferencing. As you know, they changed the state law from negotiations to collaborative conferencing. The new state law was, is called Tennessee Professional Educators Collaborative Conferencing Act. So this policy sets out that the board believes that its meaningful interest-based dialogue with professional educators is productive and constructive means to solve problems and enhance the quality of education in Murfreesboro City Schools. And it states further that the board is encouraging of entering into the collaborative conferencing process that's set forth in the Professional Educators Collaborative Conferencing Act. And it sets out, as is listed in the state law, that the items that will be discussed in collaborative conferencing include salary and wages, grievance procedures, insurance, fringe benefits, not including the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, working conditions, leave, and payroll deductions. Those are the items that the statute says are mandatory topics for collaboration. Do y'all have any other questions?
Mrs. Smith, and then Mrs. Rehneer.
I have a feeling that actually Mrs. Rehneer could answer this question for me, but how does this work? Like, really, other than any?
We've gone through this process. We have an excellent relationship with our teachers. Our contract expired June 30th, 2012, which law took effect a year before that. In October 2012, the teachers voted to participate in collaborative conferencing with Murfreesboro City Schools. And there was a special question committee, only two questions. Would you like to participate? Which organization would you like to represent you? And there was a choice of three. Murfreesboro Education Association, PET, Professional Educators of Tennessee, and Unaffiliated. The majority chose the MEA, and we participated. The board, excuse me, the organization selected seven members. Management, Murfreesboro City Schools, selected seven members. And during the summer of 2013, we got together several times and talked about what you would call a memorandum of understanding, an MOU. That took the place of a contract. And we agreed on an MOU, presented to the school board in October 2013, and you approved that last October. And that MOU is good for three years. As you can see, there are seven items that we could discuss, collaborate conference. There were eight in the old law. They took out student discipline.
And I believe there is training that both the employee representatives and the school board representatives go through relative to how to conduct collaborative conferencing. Isn't that correct?
The training is not mandatory, and we did not participate in training. We felt that we wanted to go into it to see how it was going to be, and if we felt that we needed the training, we would go back and participate in that training. It went great. We didn't need the training.
Okay. Mrs. Rehneer?
You might stay there for just a minute. Line 19, that says fringe benefits, not including TCRS, what might those be? What are the fringe benefits? A tricky one, right?
Like 43B, things like that.
Stuff like that. Okay.
Can you spell that out for the folks at home, what that would be?
Retirement savings.
Retirement savings.
And also, like, the life insurance, but that's included with the insurance.
Things for which, perhaps, we can use payroll deduction?
Yes, ma'am.
Information like that. Okay. Then on line 29, and, Ms. Baker, some of this probably will be directed at you also because I don't know how much, is this all directly from TCA?
Yes, it is.
Basically, it is.
This is basically.
Okay. Line 29, when it talks about the board rights contained in Title 49 of TCA, do you know offhand what Title 49 is?
Yeah. Well, that's, Title 49 is the section of the Tennessee statutes that deals with education. And so Title 49 is the entire set of laws that deal with education in the state.
Okay. So this is protecting the professional employee's rights defined in the Collaborative Conferencing Act, and also the board's rights as they pertain to education according to state law?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Then lines 46 to 49, and I may have to look back at it because I wrote this a long time ago. Oh, okay. 46 to 49. Absent an agreement and memorandum of understanding on terms and conditions specified for collaborative conferencing, the board shall have the authority to address such terms and conditions through board policy. Does this mean if an agreement cannot be reached between the two parties, that board policy takes over and the teachers have nothing to say?
Yes, ma'am. In a nutshell, yes, ma'am. We have to collaborate in good faith.
Right.
And we have to prove that. And if we agree not to agree, then board policy dictates.
Would we then have to develop board policy to cover things like insurance, payroll, wages, and all of those seven items that are listed?
If you choose to, yes, ma'am.
I don't like this. I mean, I understand if it's state, if it's straight from TCA.
That is from state law. It's set out in, let's see, in TCA 495609B, which states, if an agreement is reached by the management personnel of the board and the representatives of its professional employees, they shall jointly prepare proposed memorandum of understanding. And it goes on to say that the Board of Education may enter into the memorandum for a period not to exceed three years. Any items included within the memorandum that require funding shall not be considered effective until such time as the body empowered to appropriate the funds has approved a budget. If the amount of funds appropriated is less than the amount required to address the matters of collaborative conferencing, then the parties may continue to confer to reach an agreement within the amount of funds appropriated. And then it goes on to say that if a memorandum of understanding is not reached, then if agreement has not been reached between the Board of Education and the representatives, absent an agreement and memorandum of understanding on the terms and conditions specified, the Board of Education shall have the authority to address such terms and conditions through board policy. And that's set out in the state statute there.
Okay. So let me ask you this, then. What you're talking about with 495609B is basically dealt with the funding. So it's almost like collaborative conferencing, you would come up with an agreement, however, if you go to the budget process and something has to be cut and the funds aren't there, then this applies.
You have to go back.
Then you go back.
No, then you have to go back.
Right.
I'm sorry. I read a section, a second part. The second part is a sentence, it's actually in D of 609, that says that absent an agreement and memorandum of understanding on the terms and conditions specified for collaborative conferencing, the Board of Education shall have the authority to address such terms and conditions through board policy. And those terms and conditions that they're talking about are the seven items listed in the policy.
Those seven items. Okay. Well, fortunately, I think we have, there's a good relationship between the teachers and MEA being that representative body and the present leadership administration. What happens if we have different administration, different board? You see where I'm coming from? I'm sorry, right now, I'm the teacher, I need to take that hat off.
No, that has happened in other school districts, as we know.
I know it's happened, and that's what worries me. But if we're delegated to do this by state law, I understand we have to, but I want all of our teachers to know this is not what we anticipate happening.
No. And I think there's been enough publicity with districts that have not reached the MOU, that they are aware of that.
Right.
And I will tell you, I'm thankful every day that we have the relationship we have. We may not always agree, but when you can sit down at one session and in 10 minutes, basically, can knock out what you need to do, that's pretty amazing.
It is.
And so that's what happened. But it's because of that ongoing discussion. And what I've tried to make very clear is if there's an issue out there, then I want to know about it, and I want us dealing with it. And I want us, if we can't give the answer that they would like for us to give, then I want them to understand why. And so I feel for those districts that were not able to reach an MOU, but the law is what the law is. That doesn't, that doesn't make it any nicer, but I'm just grateful for the relationship that allowed us to reach an MOU with ease.
Would you define MOU for the public, please?
It's a memorandum of understanding. It basically sets out, it really can, would you like to talk, Ralph, please, about?
No, you're doing a great job.
About the discussions that were had about the MOU and how that was developed, because I think it's important.
We did. We had, I had several conversations with the, I guess, the leaders of the association about what they were looking for and what they would ask for. And then we had a lot of background work to it, but basically, we took the old contract and put the highlights of that into a memorandum of understanding, which everyone was pleased.
And there were some things in there where they wanted, even though it was in board policy, they asked that we put it in MOU, and we did that. So when you look at the memorandum of understanding, a lot of it is board policy or administrative directive that we had at the time, so it made it a lot easier.
If I may say so, I do appreciate the fact that there are seven items here, because normally, we could only negotiate for three, and every third year, open the entire contract. So at least this gives them a little more to talk about, to make their feelings known. So I'm pulled in both directions.
Thank you, Mrs. Rehneer. Dr. Brown, you had a comment?
No.
And then Mrs., then Nancy Phillips, and then Mrs. Smith.
Did you have one?
No, I was just saying that the part that Ms. Baker was referencing earlier was lines 35 through 40.
Okay.
I had a, just a few little things, questions and comments here. About the training, Mr. Ringstaff, who conducted the training for the administrative team? Who, I know you all didn't participate, but who would have, was that the state? Who would do that?
We would have to, what, they recommend if we are not a cohesive unit, that both parties, both sides attend the training together. And there are some federal mediator, training specialist that conduct the training.
So, did you say the MEA representatives did participate in the training, or did they not?
No, ma'am.
So neither side participated in the training?
No, we wanted to see if we could do it without the training first.
Well, it sounds like y'all were pretty successful.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's good. Congratulations on that.
Thanks.
The next thing is, as far as the seven members from the administrative team, was there a board member on that team?
I think the board actually?
No, ma'am. There was no board member on that.
Oh, that's right.
And they recommend no board members to be on that because you're going to have to vote for the memorandum of understanding.
And then, how were the members selected for the administrative team, maybe?
I think Dr. Gilbert and I, we got together and picked several, we had two principals on it, representative from instruction, special education, even finance, HR. I think we were?
Ralph, do you remember if the board voted on that, or did we inform the board?
We did. We voted on that.
I've just been so long ago, I can't remember.
And we had to present it to the board by December of 2012, and then the MEA had to present their individuals by January of 2013.
And they actually have a definition for the management team. It's to include employees who devote a majority of their time to system-wide areas or areas of professional personnel management, fiscal affairs, or general management, and shall specifically include principals, assistant principals, supervisors, and others whose principal responsibilities are administrative rather than teaching.
I remember when this whole process began, and the only real concern that I had shared with me from some teachers, where they felt like the communication at the beginning of the whole process was off because a lot of the communication began in the summer, and they felt like they were left out of the loop, they didn't get communicated with, they didn't have a voice. I want to make sure as we move forward with more things, that we are careful to communicate with our teachers in a way that might reach more of them in a more timely way. So that's just one of my concerns. And I can't remember, did we get a copy of this memorandum of understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we did. I thought we did. And so that was it. That was, I just want to make sure that as we continue the process, we make sure we communicate in a very effective way.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Smith?
Mrs. Phillips had the same questions that I had, except I want to know who moderated the meeting.
We really didn't have a moderator. Ty Batts, she was the president of the MEA, and we, I guess we were, I don't know, just say, I guess we spoke a lot, more than others.
So Dr. Gilbert was not a part of the meeting?
No. I sat in on it.
She was at the table.
Yeah, I was at the table, and so was the UNISERV representative, but it was, and I can't even remember, it was so long ago, who the reps were from MEA. Natalie Hopkins, gee, I don't remember. Luke Dickerson was there. We can get you that list. We'll get it, but that would have been Sarah Catalano May, was she?
She was there.
I think so.
We did it on a date of new teacher orientation.
Okay.
Okay. Did that take care of your questions?
I mean, Ms. Phillips had the exact same question, so I'm glad.
All righty. Mr. Campbell, and then Mrs. Rehneer.
Jump ahead just a little bit, because in regards to the policy on negotiations, the two policies are very similar in what they're doing, other than the fact that in negotiations, there are eight items to the seven, and student discipline comes in there, but that's not a topic under the law for collaborative conferencing.
And we're going to recommend deletion of that policy because it's no longer exist.
Okay. Okay. I think, and I can see where Ms. Phillips is coming, if I'm wanting to make sure that our teachers know, I would hope that, and this is certainly nothing negative, but I would hope that the administration of the MEA are informing their teachers on things like this and all other major items as well, because I would assume that would be part of their responsibility. Right?
Yes. Okay. Did that take care of your questions? Mr. Campbell. All righty. Mrs. Rehneer, and then Ms. Phillips.
I just have one more question about the, years ago, we had to have a mediator come in, long time ago.
I remember.
If this gets to a point ever, we know it's not going to happen in our time, but if this ever gets to a point where the MOU cannot be reached, and the board takes over and sets policy, and the teachers' group, whether that's MEA, whoever it is, is not in favor of it, can a mediator be brought in on collective conferencing?
That is not included in the state law.
It is not. Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Phillips?
Ms. Baker, I was just wondering, do we need? Ms. Baker, I was just wondering, do we need in this policy, some language about communicating the processes with the board as it continues? Because there's just nothing, I mean, I'm sure that they would, but if we're going to have a policy, I like it to reflect that, you know, that we need to know where they are, how it's going. Just a thought.
You'd like something that indicates that the management team shall communicate the status of the conferencing?
Right, that would be great.
Don't we already get that in policy updates?
Well, not specific, I mean-
Yeah, you're going to get, you'll get a copy of, when this is finalized, we'll get a copy of the update.
Are you saying you want it before the finalization?
I would, I personally would like to know how the dialogue is going. I mean, because I assume that at some point, they'll be discussing such and so, and they'll resolve that, and maybe they'll talk about something else and resolve that. I would just kind of like some kind of communication, it could be an email, it can be, you know, it doesn't have to be formalized, just something to let us know, oh, we're, you know, we're negotiating, they're drawing to an end, you know, we're having a successful negotiating session, something.
And that's legitimate, whether it's in board policy or not. I think that's necessary.
Yeah, I think-
And I would hope that, I would hope that in years to come, that the conferencing is as collaborative as it was, and so you don't have to get a lot of emails.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But I think it's important for you to know that.
Mr. Campbell?
Are those conferencing meetings, get-togethers, are they open to the public, or to anyone, to attend?
Yes, sir.
No, they're not public meetings under the open meetings law.
But can we, as board members, attend and just kind of sit back and listen if we want to, if we know when they're going to be held? Or is that not? Probably not a good idea, though, we're going to have to vote on it, one way or the other?
Exactly. If more than one board member is there, he may start triggering the sunshine law, that's part of the problem when multiple board members, if they attended those. And one difference in the collaborating conferencing law is, if you'll remember, with the statutes that dealt with negotiations, they actually included a provision that allowed negotiations to be closed meetings, if multiple board members attended. However, this doesn't reflect that same language, so it indicates that if more than one board member attended a meeting and was involved in the discussion, that it could turn into a public meeting. So, while, if these don't involve a governing body, so they wouldn't fall under the open meetings law.
But if we wanted to know, are minutes out there for us to look at if we want, I mean, if we wanted to come to your office and sit down and look at the minutes of the last conference meeting?
Yes, sir.
Is that acceptable? Kelly?
Yeah, y'all did maintain minutes of the meeting, so those would be available, those would be a public record.
Okay.
All right, Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I see where Mr. Campbell's coming from. I really want to know the give and take, I want to know what the teachers, you know, were asking for. I want to know what the conversation is in the conferencing.
Well, that's why we have Ralph.
And Ralph has a slant. I mean, in theory, that you, I know you're perfect in all ways, but it would be nice to, for us to have an idea of what the teachers came to the table with. I guess the only way to get it is through the minutes.
Well, to be honest with you, everything that came to the table with is in the MOU.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Everything that they came to the table with is in the MOU.
Oh, okay.
We really didn't disagree on anything, we agreed on everything.
Mrs. Smith, did that answer your question that you had?
It did and it didn't, it just, I'm glad to know it was joyful, because, but if it weren't joyful, I would, you know, I would like to know both sides of it.
All righty, is there any more discussion on BO-51 for Mr. Ringstaff, for Ms. Baker, or Dr. Gilbert?
And this policy is before you tonight to determine if you would like to bring it on first reading at the next meeting.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Baker. Is there a motion to bring this forward for our next meeting?
Some moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, sign of a "aye." Thank you.
Okay, the next policy you have before you again is a new policy, Board Policy BO-52 regarding homeschools. This actual policy that you have before you is developed off of a recommended policy from the Tennessee School Board Association, and it again is based on state law, and that is TCA 49-6, 3050, that is the code section that deals with homeschools. And it sets forth, the definition of a homeschool is a school that's conducted or directed by a parent, or parents, or legal guardian, or guardians for their own children. Homeschools which teach K through 12, where the parents are associated with an organization that conducts church-related homeschools, which are supervised by such organization, and which administer standardized achievement tests at the same time test are given in their regular day schools are exempt from this policy, as well as that state law. They are handled in a different way by the state of Tennessee, those type of homeschools. So, a homeschool that is conducted strictly by the parent or the legal guardian must comply with this law. Parents wishing to conduct a homeschool have to meet the following requirements. They have to provide annual notice to the director of schools before the commencement of each school year of the intent to conduct a homeschool. They have to submit to the director the name, number, age, grade level of children involved, the location of that homeschool, the curriculum to be offered, and the proposed hours of instruction, the qualifications of the parent-teacher, and, and that hyphen needs to be taken out, it should just say parent-teacher, and a description of the courses to be taught each year. At Ms.'s suggestion, since we are a K through, a pre-K through six system, I will delete out the language regarding the college preparatory or general course of education for grades nine through 12. I'll delete that out. And next, the parent must maintain attendance records that are subject, under state law, to inspection by the director of schools. Under state law, those attendance records have to be submitted to the director at the end of each school year. And the parent must also provide instruction for at least four hours per day for the same number of instructional days as required by state law for public schools. The parent-teacher must possess a high school diploma or GED in order to conduct the classes. The parent-teacher must cooperate in the administration to the homeschool students of appropriate test set forth by the Tennessee Commissioner of Education or the Commissioner's Desert Knee, or, and that is set out in the state law as well. The parent-teacher must take action according to state law if the homeschool student falls behind the appropriate grade level. There are certain criteria of when they assess the child to determine when they've fallen behind grade level, and that's all set out in the state statutes. They must submit proof to the director that the homeschool student has been vaccinated as required by law. They must submit proof to the director that other health services and examinations as required by law have been received by the homeschool student. And in the event of an illness or inadequacy of the homeschool parent-teacher, they have to employ a tutor with the right qualifications to take their place during that illness. And it also says that it shall be the policy of the board, that public school facilities shall be available for homeschool instruction only when the following conditions exist. Number one, special needs courses are being taught which require services that are unavailable to the homeschool student. Number two, the services cannot be provided through any means other than the public school. Number three, the requests for services are made known by the homeschool parent when notice is given to the director of the intent to conduct a homeschool. Number four, the director of schools investigates the request and makes recommendations to the board. Number five is no overcrowding or additional expenses, including providing transportation or other special situations which interfere with the normal operation of the school system shall be incurred, and approval by the board is given on a case-by-case basis. So, those six factors have to exist. And I was asked this question by a board member, whether lines 55 through 57 are in conflict with the prior section on attendance. We, in our policy, have requested that the homeschool, the attendance supervisor checks those homeschool attendance records at least twice a year, rather than just waiting to the end of the year, so that we can provide assistance if there is any concerns about them not actually complying with the state law on the attendance factor. And if a homeschool student falls more than one year behind the student's appropriate grade level, in the homeschooled student's comprehensive test scores for two consecutive tests, and if a certified teacher would have taught the child, if the child's grade level determines through appropriate means that the student is not learning disabled, the director of school shall require the parent to enroll the child in a public, private, or church-related school. And that comes straight out of state law, that's a state law requirement.
Any questions? Dr. Brown, and then Mrs. Rinear.
Three items. One, line 37 and 38 refers specifically to an age, and similar to lines 15 and 16, I would probably remove that. In line 32, where it talks about in the event of illness or inadequacy of the homeschool teacher to teach a specific subject, who determines the inadequacy? How do we tell that?
That's, I know when they fill out their application, I went to the state's website to pull up homeschool, and the application is pretty sparse. They have to provide proof that they have a high school diploma or GED. And, I don't know, Mr. Lyles, if you have any more information, he handles the homeschool issues, so.
Yes, we've had one situation where a grandparent reported, they felt like the neglect, the parent was neglecting to provide services, and at that point, I recommended that they call DCS. At that point, we didn't have a policy in place, in state law. But that was the only situation that I recall, the last three years that I've dealt with it, that we've had.
And I guess this is an open-ended question, but to me, that phrase pertains to the cognitive ability of the parent to teach that specific subject, so I guess it falls into lines 59 through 63, where we're going to let the child fall two years behind, and then try to do something about it, which to me is a bad situation to be in.
Yeah, it is. We only test in fifth grade, according to this policy, so.
The state law only allows us to issue the test in the fifth grade.
Yeah.
So these children will have gone up to fifth grade before we're allowed to issue a test.
I have had calls from schools with kids re-enrolling, wanting to re-enroll, and my suggestion to them was that you have the authority to do a placement test upon enrollment. But all the parent has to have is the high school, they only have to prove to us they have a high school diploma or GED.
Well, as we talk to our state legislators, I think this could be some language that could be clarified. And then, the third point in line 62, where it talks about the director of school shall require the parent to enroll in a public, private, or church-related school, again, I see that as putting our director of schools in a very difficult situation, where if that does not occur, the only recourse is to refer to a DCS, which to me, seems to be a very poor option. So, this is one of those where I know that we're bound by Tennessee code, but this seems to be very poorly-written code to me.
Well, in that situation that you referred to at the end, the approach that we would take is if we deem that the child's fallen behind and needs to enroll in a actual school, whether it be public, private, or church-related, then we would mark them as truant until we receive confirmation that they have enrolled, and then we take that to juvenile court through the truancy laws, and then the juvenile court judge will have jurisdiction to handle that issue.
Okay.
And I've had that type of situation arise relative to parents that have attempted to avoid some truancy issues by pulling their children to homeschool them, and the juvenile court, that's where the remedy comes, is they get involved and they get DCS involved with educational neglect issues. So that's the approach that's taken to handle that issue.
Okay, Mrs. Rinear, and then Ms. Phillips.
I have several questions, I'm sorry. First of all, Mr. Lyles, how many of these situations do we have, or have we had, and you said the past three years that you've been doing it?
As far as we-
How many students have been homeschooled?
Oh, homeschooling? This year currently, we have 17 total.
17 total, okay.
Yes, and I'd be happy to send you a breakdown by schools.
You do have a breakdown by schools?
And by grade.
17 total?
Yeah, homeschool.
Homeschool.
That's independent homeschool, not those that are, not those that are enrolled under the umbrella organizations, they don't come through our office.
Okay.
But we have also 10 in the Tennessee Virtual Academy. We get a printout of our students that enroll with them.
And they too had to have, aren't they supposed to have approval from you?
With the Virtual Academy, there is a period of time where they can enroll without approval from me. There is a time, and homeschool used to be this way, until the legislature removed it. There is a time at the end of-
July, I think it's by July 1. If they have not enrolled in Virtual Academy, then we don't, the director has instructed us, we don't give approval, so.
Okay.
They have to explore other options.
Okay, let me, I have to look back at my notes now. Mrs. Baker, when you were reading lines two and three, you said, "homeschools which teach K through 12, where the parents are associated with an organization that conducts church-related schools," and you said church-related homeschools, I don't know which way you want it there.
Okay, let me-
On line three.
Give you, see if I have the definition. There is, they define church-related schools, see if I brought that with me.
That's okay, it's nothing to quibble over, but I just, so you get it the way you want it?
It should say church-related schools, not homeschools.
Okay, that's what it says.
Church-related schools is the wording.
Okay, and then, line 18, when it starts talking about attendance, if a child is being homeschooled, how on earth, I guess, I'm sorry, I guess, I just think that's ridiculous. If a child is in my home, I'm not going to count him absent and turn in that this child is absent from school.
And all you, prior to this policy, you only have to turn in to us an attendance record at the end of the school-
Twice a year, right?
Right now, before the policy, once a year, at the end of the school year.
And the state has an attendance sheet that they recommend the homeschool parents utilize, and they're supposed to set out the hours that the child is actually participating in homeschool, because it has to be at least four hours per day for the same number of instructional days that the school system has.
Right.
So that's the attendance sheet that the homeschool parent is supposed to maintain and turn in to prove attendance to us.
That's part of the packet we give them.
And again, the truancy laws have allowed us, if that attendance isn't completed, then we can take that to truancy court, but of course, you're, you know.
It's kind of an on-my-honor thing, I think.
And we don't allow them to re-enroll for the second year until we get their attendance report.
Well, and again, if a parent is dead-set that their child is going to be homeschooled, and whether they have gotten approval or not, they're not going to send the child to school, so then we go to truancy court. Okay, all right, so, and that's what I was just going to ask about, lines 20 and 21. Okay, all right, so, and that's what I was just going to ask about lines 20 and 21, must be, must do four hours per day for 180 days. I'm not sure that's always happening. And I'm sure lots of them are, but I know of some that are not.
Is it not an average? I mean, is it, is it really four hours a day, or is it an average?
State law, four hours a day. All they have to reflect on their report to us is four hours a day for the 180 days, and we give them a copy of our school calendar as a part of their enrollment package as well. But that's, that's it.
Well, I know that I've heard of children who are doing like a self-programmed text, and when they finish it in January, they think they're finished for the year. So I know that that's not occurring.
Right.
But again, that's the, you know, honor system.
Is that on the elementary level?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it's elementary, high school, I've heard of some older children, whether that's fifth, sixth, eighth, I don't know. I just know of some over children. Let's see, line 34, "In the event of illness or inadequacy," okay. That was what Dr. Brown just spoke of, the inadequacy of the parent-teacher to teach a specific subject, employ a tutor having the same qualifications. That's ridiculous. If they can't teach the child with their qualifications, why would they hire someone of the same qualification? Wouldn't that have to be of higher level, or a degree, or something that would reflect the second person, the tutor would be more knowledgeable? Not by Tennessee law, there you go.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, we need to fix some of those things. On this part, this is if the students will be, if, shall be the policy of the board that public school facilities shall be available for homeschool instruction only when all of these exist?
Right. And it's my understanding that this section really comes more into play for those older students, for example, that needed access to a chemistry lab, or, you know, that, that type of specialized equipment that may only be available at the public school.
So the special needs then in line 44, that does not mean special services such as...
Not necessarily. It could mean special needs for a chemistry lab.
Chemistry lab, okay.
That's, that's the best example I can think of.
I just had to note something about...
Have we had any of these requests?
Bus for special services, that was what I was thinking, because if we had a child with special needs, on the other end of the spectrum, we have provided a bus, so that doesn't apply there. I'm in the wrong wavelength there, okay.
Ms. Raniere?
Yes.
I might add that in some situations where there are homeschools, they have an IEP, then especially a department does offer speech-language services at the school, but that's it.
And are they providing their own transportation then?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's no additional expense to the district.
And then on that section that we were just discussing about the testing, I was not, I was not aware that they were not tested until fifth grade.
That is actually part of the state law, is when the testing takes place.
Correct.
And do they come into our, I know that we had some come back to a school where I was teaching to be tested with our children.
That's correct.
Is that part of the law?
Yes, I believe so. I believe they, they have to take those tests in a supervised fashion that complies with the regulations of the State Department of Education.
Okay.
And you have to provide for them, just like you do your other children.
Right, okay. Yes, yes, too. Okay, I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips and then Ms. Smith.
Oh, my goodness. What? Oh, I don't even know where to start. But a couple of things, I'd be interested to hear our directors, if you have any suggestions that would, you know, because I'm sure you have a better take on this. The one thing is, and I'm glad that Dr. Brown brought it up, for example, number 11, "In the event of illness or inadequacy," I'm, I'm just assuming, since it says illness, that when they talk about inadequacy, they're not talking about an inability mentally, cognitively, to teach it, but they broke their leg, or, it doesn't spell it out, though, does it?
No, it doesn't spell it out, but in some of the comments, an example would be that a parent maybe isn't great at math, and they're teaching a high school student some higher, trying to teach them a higher-level math, a calculus class, they may need to hire a tutor that can teach the calculus class, as opposed to the parent doing that.
Well, then what Ms. Raniere says is just absolutely on target. That doesn't make sense if it says at the same qualifications. But anyway, you know, my question is, how can we police any of this? We have no way to police any of this. It's like, you know, "In the event of illness or inadequacy of the homeschool parent-teacher to teach a specific subject, blah, da, blah, da, blah." There's nothing we can do about this. We can't go into their homes and make those, you know, decisions. I just worry that there's not a lot of enforcement. We have the policy, but it's, it's just empty. So that concerns me. Also, what happens if a family that wants to homeschool moves into the neighborhood, I mean, into our city after the start of school?
They can homeschool. Now, that was not the case. Well, I'll let you address that.
Yes. All they have to do is provide us with the documentation, a copy of the birth certificate, immunization record, proof of address, valid driver's license, and a copy of the GED or high school diploma.
Until last year, much like the virtual school, there was a limit, and I believe it was the end of September, I haven't checked, looked at it lightly, but you had the, if you wanted to homeschool, you had to inform the school district at a certain time, and then there was a fee if you didn't. But by the end of September, I believe it was, then the director had to give approval for homeschool. And when I was in instruction previously, I know there were several times, typically when that would happen, after that date, there would be an issue with truancy, there would be an issue with lies, there would be an issue someplace, and I know several times that I've recommended to Ms. Mathis that we not give permission to homeschool. There are parents who do a great job with homeschool, there are organizations that do a great job with homeschool. And I wish that the law were different than it is, and I would say that every other director in the state would agree with that, and probably every school board, because you're absolutely right. By the time they are tested in fifth grade, then we have an issue, because then we're looking at, okay, they're a year behind, then they're a year behind. So it's, all that we know that would be good prevention early is out the door. So we are totally dependent upon that parent and their willingness to give their child an excellent education.
One last question, and that's taking back to your example, Mr. Lyles, about the child who needs speech therapy. Now, a homeschooled child that needs speech therapy, of course, in the state, the money follows the child, but we're not getting, we wouldn't get any money to help support that special education teacher, that speech pathologist? Is, I mean, they don't, the parents don't pay, right, for that speech therapy?
No, they don't. They don't. But it was one of our students in the beginning, you know what I'm saying, they had to have been enrolled in our school.
They have to have been at one point enrolled in our schools? I can't hear you.
Usually, yes.
Okay.
But that's the only case we've dealt with so far. They were previously a student, parent drew them to homeschool, they had an IEP already in place.
Okay.
And speech therapy is the only service that we offer.
So do we get any money from the government at all for that child to support that speech pathologist?
Not to my knowledge. Mr. Marlin?
We, we are required by law to provide services for private school students as a proportionate amount of our federal monies that we receive. So every year, we do provide those, and what we, as, as most boards, most districts have, have decided is we use that for those speech-language services. So we provide that for the, for the private schools. So we provide services for, you know, private schools within our district, and those homeschools that we're talking about here are considered private schools in that, under that definition.
You know, I don't think I realized that. We provide speech therapy for the kids in private schools in our district that, those...
For those that elect, and not all private schools elect to do that, but, but some do, and we have to provide those services, and that's, that's, we are given those funds for that.
Well, good. Good, good, good. At least the kids are getting the services they need, and that's what really counts.
Right.
And we have a person at the central office that really is the liaison, part of her job is to liaison with those private schools.
That's very good, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
This is an example of a policy that's, we're, we're going to have, do we have to adopt this because the state adopted it?
Yes, this is state law.
But we can tweak it, or, so, is the, I mean, could we, as part of our policy, make it a little more stringent?
We can't make the state law, we really, there's not a lot that we can change in this policy. It's, this is mandated by the state. The one thing that I will say we've done, we've added was that requiring the attendance person to check enrollment twice a year, as opposed to waiting to the end of the year.
And could we add that the children need to be tested in third, fourth?
There's a detailed section that says when, when the state can mandate that the child be tested, and it doesn't start till fifth grade.
And maybe I'm missing this, is there possibly a personal interview process with the, with our system, with these homeschool parents, to go through the...
The paper, the process, yes. I meet with them in one-on-one.
You meet with them individually?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you, if you notice that someone you thought was not capable of providing a sound education for their child...
But according to state law, all they have to provide me, that certainly has been my judgment in a lot of cases. But according to state law, all I can require is that verification of a high school diploma or GED. Am I correct, Ms. Baker?
Yeah, that's correct. Unfortunately, that's the way this, this law is written.
And if we wanted to rewrite this and send it to our legislators, would that be the right thing to do?
Yes, that's exactly what needs to be done.
I, I think we have some respected members of the community that can help us rewrite this.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Take, take your heat.
Probably.
Okay. Dr. Brown and then Mr. Campbell.
Actually, Ms. Smith had just covered one of my points. First point is, I've known many parents over the years who have done an excellent job of homeschooling. This policy, to me, is not a negative reflection on parents' homeschooling, it's just a very poorly-written state code that I think could be made much more clear. And Mr. Barrett is our legislative representative, so my suggestion would be that we work together to try to cover areas where we think this policy could be strengthened, and then let Mr. Barrett take that to our state legislators.
I thought it was Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Barrett is the legislative representative for the region or something.
Oh, okay. Well, but it's your...
You are correct.
I think what we have to remember, and I think Mr. Lyles has said it, and so has Ms. Baker, and even Ms. Smith said it, this, this is a policy that, pretty much, our hands are tied. You're exactly right. If, if the parent says they're doing four hours a day, and they're doing two today and six tomorrow, we've got no recourse at all. Am I right, Mr. Lyles? We're taking what the parent says, what they've signed their name to, and maybe the parent understands that it's okay to do, as long as it's an average of four hours a day. It's kind of like saying, you're supposed to work 20 hours a week, but you work whatever schedule you want to. Well, if you work six hours today, and six hours tomorrow, then you've only got eight more to go, and you've got three days to do it, and you work eight days, eight hours the third day, then you've got your 20. And it's bad, I, I agree. I would hope that it could be changed, and we can police it, but we don't have the personnel to police it like we would like to police it, I don't think.
Dr. Brown?
I'm much less concerned about provisions such as at least four hours a day. If the parents can teach, teach the child in two hours a day and do an outstanding job of teaching, that's fine with me. If they can teach them in two weeks and take two weeks off, that's fine. What I would like to see is some type of intervention earlier to be sure the adequacy of teaching, where we don't let that child fall so far behind. So I would be more interested in a provision where the testing is done on a much earlier, much more frequent basis to ensure the adequacy of the education.
What, what Tennessee code is this, Kelly?
Okay, it is, there's actually just one statute that deals with homeschools in the entire code. TCA 49 dash 6 dash 3050.
It's at the bottom of the...
Should be at the bottom on page, the second one.
Oh, you're on the, you're on that.
And I can send the board a copy of the actual statute if you would like. And the testing portion is in subpart, hold on, B5. And B5, A and B, in section B is where it talks about that the, the testing is grade five.
I think it would be helpful, too, Mr. Lyles, if you could send the board a copy of the packet that we give.
Yes.
I think that would help them understand.
We can do that. And, and the breakdown that we have so far.
That'd be great.
Those enroll.
Are there any more questions or comments? I think all the comments, Dr. Brown?
I'll just say one more time that this is not a reflection on parents who homeschool. Again, I know parents who have done an outstanding job, I know parents right now who are homeschooling their children and are doing a very good job. So if anyone is listening tonight, I don't want them to feel that this board has a negative attitude toward homeschooling. I think this is just a, a concern to have a policy that's better written than the one that we're presented with tonight.
Very well said. I do think all the ideas have been great, and I do think it would be good if we could tweak, get a little letter together, kind of help tweak this in some spots.
So we need to table it?
No, we won't. We'll go ahead and approve it with the idea that Ms. Baker's going to make on line 15 and 16, she's going to make a deletion. And since we've got Mr. Campbell that's on, you're on TLE, aren't you? That we'll get with Mr. Campbell and see what we, what we need to do to go ahead and work with this.
Is still calling, isn't he?
Probably is. But we'll go ahead and entertain a motion for first reading of this, to bring it forward, and then work with Mr. Campbell and Mr. Barrett on getting that letter out.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor of approving this first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Okay. The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy SS2, Contract Services for Specialized Activities for the Extended School Program. There, this is a current policy, I've made minor revision to it. This policy deals with the ESP program entering into contracts to provide specialized activities, for example, karate classes, piano lessons, art, art classes, those type of special activities that they may incorporate into the programming of the extended school program. And as you can see there, it could cover anywhere from arts and humanities, vocational, social sciences, entertainment, communications, and physical education. And what, the change I've made is that those contracts are to be approved by the school board attorney, myself, and the director, and the supervisor of ESP. Before, they just were approved by the site director and the supervisor of ESP. I felt it was important that these contracts include provisions to protect the school system, and that I need to review them when we enter into them, as well as Dr. Gilbert needs to review those and know what's going on. And also, that the contracts are going to be with independent contractors. If they were contracts with our part-time employees, that, that's, that's an employment issue, that may be that we've assigned additional duties to that part-time employee. That may be that we've assigned additional duties to that part-time employee, as opposed to entering into a contract with the part-time employee. So those are the changes I've made to this section.
Any questions or comments for this particular SS2?
A move that we accept is move it forward for first reading.
There's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Hey, the next two policies, I'll talk to you about them together. It's Board Policy BO14 regarding negotiations, and Board Policy BO15 that sets out the responsibilities, authorities, and rights of the negotiating team. I'm recommending that those two policies be deleted, because that provision of the state law has been deleted regarding negotiations, so they're no longer applicable.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Baker on this deletion? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion. If I could get a motion to delete both of these?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion for the deletion of BO14 and 15, and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And may, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Since you have moved to go on to delete those, do you see a need for me to bring those on a first and second reading?
No, ma'am. No. Thank you, Ms. Baker. I ask at this time, if you haven't, if you would kind of scan the draft agenda for our March 25 meeting. And also, Dr. Gilbert, on our March 25 meeting, we would need to have the discussion of the school name, if that's all righty. If you'll add that to the agenda?
What? Mr. Bush?
On an email that we received about, we voted on the naming of the schools. We need to bring that up again in our next board meeting.
Are you talking about, like, Bellwood and all that?
Yes, yes. We'll have some discussion at that time.
I got some more. A teacher sent me some information, I'll send to you all.
Okay. If you would, and this will be on our agenda for our March 25 meeting. Is there anything else that, by looking at the agenda, that needs, uh, Mrs. Smith?
At some point, I went, want some kind of reporting on all the moving, the overall creek, the Reeves-Rogers, both with, with staff and physically, like, you know, the desk and the smartboards and the equipment, just what the plans are in place, vaguely, not, you know, chair by chair. Just, just a little overview would be very helpful.
And what's happening with the families, our special needs families, what, how that's going, what the plan is, where they are in the process, I'd like that. And I'd like to see, and I wish that they, maybe I, I may have overlooked the email. You may have already sent it, on the agenda for the retreat. Has somebody sent that yet?
I haven't been sent it yet.
Okay, I'd like.
We should get that probably next, one day next week. Thank you, Mrs. Price.
Can I add part testing to our agenda?
Okay, for next meeting?
What I'd like to do is just give you a comprehensive view of testing.
Okay.
Because it'll be about that time.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
A comprehensive view of testing that we do in the district.
Good. Anything else you'd like to see added to the agenda for our March 25 meeting? Seeing nothing else, I know those items will be added, and thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else for the March meeting, our last meeting of March, we will entertain a motion, uh, oh, my second page. Is there any other business? I had two sheets. Is there any other business?
Do we need to bring a lunch or something for the retreat?
They usually break us.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Do we need to do anything?
Not that I'm aware of. If you have questions, I know you've given me topics, but if you have particular questions for board meetings or for the retreat, if you'll get those to us beforehand, so that we're prepared to answer. Those, that would be great.
She was asking, are we having lunch?
We'll get with, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
And what are the hours of the retreat?
It's 12.
Noon.
12 until.
12 until we finish.
Next Friday. So if you've not gotten it in, give Mrs. Price a chance to, to get it on there. It will not, I don't think it will be a long meeting. You wouldn't want 14 items on there, because you probably would not have time. And there may be some that are blended, that maybe took on a different, if you'll look over that and get with Dr. Gilbert and give us a call, give me a call. All righty. If there is nothing else that claims your attention, we'll entertain, oh, for that, I know what I forgot, under other business. Tonight is the last night for Amanda from the D and J to be with us. And certainly, we want to thank Amanda for her work with the board and coming to our meetings. Thank you, Amanda. Amanda's such a quiet little spirit. She doesn't say a lot, she's really quiet, but we certainly appreciate.
We can't hate good people.
No, we can't. We get them, we train them, and they leave us. That's all right. We will miss you, and thank you so much. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Moving.
Thank you, say second. Thank you.